Call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, February 25, 2025 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. Tonight, the prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman-at-Large Melborn Moran Jr. will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Pledge.
Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge. Pledge.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Yes, I am present. I am attending via Zoom. I am currently in my Vancouver, Washington office. It is a private office, and there is no one else here. I will tell you, I would rather be in my Miami office because I did not realize there was a storm, atmospheric weather, cherry town trees out here.
Alderman Tivido.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemens. Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman TiVo.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'm attending via Zoom. I'm recovering from the flu, and I am here alone.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here.
Twelve present, three absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporate Leadership Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. A few things. First, we had a very bad storm a week or so ago, and I wanted to thank our plow drivers and our BPW workers for working very hard to clear this very difficult storm. It's one of the worst ones that I've seen because not only was there quite a bit of snow, but the nature of the snow and the way it came, and then rain and ice, it just made it a very difficult storm. Many worked long hours. Andy Patrician and Matt LeBlanc, who are part of Director Fodo's leadership team, they actually plowed during most of the storm themselves. So again, thank you to those employees. Never a perfect job, but under the circumstances, very good. I wanted to mention, Madam President, oh, 2441, the L.L.A. Exemption Ordinance. This was cosponsored by me and a bunch of the Aldermen. There have been a few amendments. Good. We need this because our people who are seniors on limited incomes, who are trying to stay in their homes, are having a very difficult time now. Inflation is difficult. Eggs have gone from, what, $2 to $8 in very, very short order. So there's a lot of sponsors, and I'm sure this will pass, but thank you for your work on that. And I gave my State of the City address last week, so I thought I'd give a few updates quickly. First, on the federal funds front, we continue to monitor what's happening. We did get a three and a half, we were awarded a $3.5 million grant for the installation of EV, electric vehicle charging stations, but we think that's probably at risk. We are still getting funded on most fronts, except that our HUD representative, someone we've been working with for many years, is gone. That person helped us with the CDBG money, with the home funds, and with the multimillion-dollar LED grant. We've been told today that there was a replacement, but yet, we'll yet to see how easy that person is to work with. Certainly, a big concern is on the Medicaid front. The healthcare providers are continuing to be paid for the moment, but there's a bill in Congress which would cut Medicaid by $880 billion over 10 years. Medicaid, of course, provides medical care for people who usually don't have a lot of money but need healthcare. Our information suggests that in the 2nd District, and we got this from our Congressional Representative Goodlander, 72,000 people in the 2nd District are on Medicaid. And if, we're going to try to get the numbers from Nashville, but just extrapolating, estimating from that figure, Nashua is about 1/7th of the congressional district, so maybe 10,000 people, 8,000 people, a lot of people here in our community on Medicare. And if that gets cut significantly, you know, they're going to definitely feel that. There's the opening of this new casino in the South End next week. A lot of investment going in there. It made me look to the assessment of the mall over the last, since 2016. And actually, the value of the mall pursuant to the assessments, and there have been multiple litigations, we're always trying to defend those values, but multiple litigations there. The value has actually declined slightly over the last eight, nine years, eight, nine years, despite the fact that the community has doubled from 8 to 16 million. The value of the mall has dropped about 5 million, according to our research. Hopefully, this casino will turn that around a little bit, and we'll get more property tax value out of that. But it just is a case in point of what we've been talking about for so many years, about how commercial values have not gone up, while residential has, working through these revaluations, a shift in the tax burden towards and on residential homeowners. That taxpayer used to be clearly the biggest taxpayer in the city. Hopefully, we'll get more value once this casino opens, and hopefully, other commercial properties will increase along with it down there in the South End. Anyway, that's all I have, Madam President, and I hope that you are too. Mr. Dowd, Alderman Dowd feels better soon, and same with Alderman O'Brien, who we're still missing. So thank you very much.
Response to the remarks of Mayor. Seeing none, recognition period.
None.
Discussions or presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation from Doria Brown, who's the Energy Manager on Nashua Community Power. Would you like to come forward?
I was curious on how we would advance the slides. I know you always have me, Donna.
Thank you. So, good evening. Today, I have an update on the Nashua Community Power Program. First, I'm going to go over briefly. All right. There we go. Thank you. What Community Power is. Community Power is a program that we implemented in 2023, and it allows the city of Nashua to purchase energy as a supplier for the community and offer electricity at a different rate than ever source. It allows the community to be the default power supplier, instead of ever source, who was originally the default power supplier. This is just an infographic on how that works, and I'm happy to answer more questions about it after this meeting, if you need it. So let's get into rates. We set a temporary rate for the Nashua Community Power Program at 8.9 cents in February for a term from February to March, which is a little bit differently than how we've been doing things. Usually, we set rates at a six-month period in line with the utilities. We decided to remove the Nashua Community Benefit Rate, which had a 2/10th of a cent adder on it, to stay competitive with ever source's default rate, which is at 8.9 cents a kilowatt hour, from February 1st all the way through July 31st. In February, the Coalition Board raised rates from 8.9 cents to 9.7 cents effective through March 3rd through July 31st. Oh, thank you. The Coalition raised the default customer rates to 9.7 cents to protect its financial So we kind of had a difficult early winter at the Coalition. We set electric rates at 8.6 cents for the last term, and that included the months of November, December, and January from 2024 to 2025. And I don't know if you noticed, but it was really cold this December. We had a real winter. And we had open positions on the wholesale market for Nashua Community Power, as well as all the other communities in the Coalition. And when you have a portion of your supply on the wholesale market, that means you're open to price fluctuations, which could be due to weather, the amount of electricity people are using, and so on and so forth. But since we had a significant open position at the Coalition, we ate into our reserves, making it harder to set lower rates for this next term. And that's why we're at a rate that's higher than the ever source utility default rate, which was bound to happen at one time or another for the Coalition, but it is a little bit disheartening to see it happen this early in the program. Nashua Community Power rates are 8/10ths of a cent higher than ever sources, and that will cost the average household about five extra dollars per month if they choose to stay on the Nashua Community Power rate. But this also raises a question, why are the utility rates so low from March to July? So the default energy rates for the utilities are extremely low because they've been allowed to take advantage of the wholesale market themselves for this term. The PUC has requested that they put 100% to 30% of their portfolio in the wholesale market, and they followed suit. And that allows them to set lower rates like we're able to, because we can put a portion of our portfolio in the wholesale market. The issue is, is that the utilities aren't, the utilities aren't taking on as much risk as we do in the Coalition with our reserves. The utility is likely to allow them to apply under collection from high prices in the wholesale market to their default supply rates, not default supply rates, I apologize, through their delivery rates. And that means that consumers might be charged for electricity supplied twice. So you might pay an extremely low rate in the first period, so that 8.9 cents, or if it's another utility, 8.3 or 8.1 cents. But if the wholesale market is extremely high, that means they are not collecting enough money to cover their costs for that electric supply, and that deficit can be applied to delivery fees in the next term. And that's not just for customers that are in the ever source pool, it's for customers across their entire, their entire service area. So that's for Community Power Coalition customers, ever source customers, and other people on third-party rates. So people essentially are offsetting the risk that the utilities are taking to be on the wholesale market. And that's impactful to us as a community power supplier, Nashua Community Power, because it makes it harder for us to compete with their lower rates, because we assume all the risk of being in the wholesale market, whereas the utilities are able, or might be able to apply their deficit to the entire pool that they serve. So the Community Power Coalition helped author House Bill 760. It's legislation that has bipartisan support, and it would stop the utilities from being able to charge under collection from being in the wholesale market across their customer base. And I want to be clear with everybody, they currently aren't applying under collection to the entire customer base. It's expected that the PUC will allow them to do so in the next rate-setting period, which would be from July to February 2026. I'm sorry. Yes, July to February 2026. I did want to run through a revenue report for Nashua Community Power through December 31st, 2025. We don't have the numbers from January and February, because it takes a little bit to settle the accounts. It's a lot of kilowatt hours and money that's going back and forth, which I'll explain now. So through December 31st, from our launch in 2023, we sold $41.4 million worth of electricity. Our overhead was $35 million. We put $5.5 million into reserves, and that includes the decrease that we had eating into reserves in December. We have $135,000 in discretionary reserves from the community benefit rate that we had from August to, or August to January 2025. We provided 6.5 million in savings from launch to the community, and we sold 186,000 megawatt hours worth of electricity. So I did want to go over what joint reserves are and discretionary reserves are. So joint reserves is the pool of money that we're able to accumulate through the sale of electricity. So it's that change or that difference between the cost to serve and the amount we're charging for that electricity. That profit is what we would be putting into joint reserves. And they are here to maintain stable rates and protect against sudden upward adjustments. Because we had joint reserves, we were able to make sure we didn't have a huge spike in our electricity prices, because we were able to lean on those during the December months, when our cost to serve was lower than the cost of electricity, or higher than the cost or the price that we were setting rates. Discretionary reserves is when you add an adder or a different rate than the portfolio that CPCNH offers. That adder goes into discretionary or excess reserves, and that can be used for special projects. Since we did have a discretionary reserve account created from the last rate period, we do have $135,000 in discretionary reserves, and we're projected to see that go up to $150,000 once the account is settled from January. So I did raise the question on if we could apply our discretionary reserves to the current rate that we were setting at 9.7 cents, to see if we can get that a little bit closer to the ever source utility rate. And it didn't apply a significant enough difference in order to make that decision to move forward, and CPCNH didn't have as much of a mechanism in place to do that. But in the future, they're going to see if that's something that a community can do. So one of the programs I was working on before we had to change rates for CPCNH was an energy coaching pilot program, and the funding source was supposed to be the 150K from discretionary reserves. It would provide energy-saving strategies and coaching to community members. Participants would receive individual assessments and actionable advice to optimize energy use. Eligibility requirements would be to be enrolled in the Nashua Community Power rate. The benefit would be lowering electricity bills through enhanced efficiency, and it would reinforce the community power, the Nashua Community Powers program dedicated to supporting and empowering its customers. So I do have questions and answers, but I have to read the statement first. So at 6:00 PM tonight, the Chair released a statement, the Chair of the Community Power Coalition released a statement, and it says, "As we approach our third year of services being delivered to our members, our CEO, Brian Callen, has decided with agreement of CPCNH to step aside on February 28th, 2025, or 2025, 2025 is a long time from now, to allow CPCNH to begin its next chapter with new leadership at the helm. While at CPCNH, Brian helped grow the staff to eight talented employees, and expanded contractor and service providers to meet our growing organizational needs. Brian will be focusing on recently discovered family health issues while looking forward to what new opportunities are uncovered in the future. CPCNH's staff and contractors will ensure member services and operations are performed effectively." All right. Questions?
Alderman TiVo.
Thank you, Madam President. So are you suggesting that the citizens that are currently on Nashua Community Power go back to ever source?
I think that's a choice for citizens to make. It's an extra $5 a month in comparison to the ever source rate if you use 650 kilowatt hours a month. So it is a little bit more. We are going to be providing programming through the Energy Coaching Program soon, so it would be a requirement that you be enrolled in the Nashua Community Power Program. But if that's something that a community member doesn't want to pay extra for, then they have a choice to go back to the ever source rate.
So I'll let my colleagues know, but there's going to be a lot of calls to the call center, probably going back. I would assume people would want to go back. And things are so expensive, I think $5, $10, if they use even more. Probably advantageous for them at this point to try to make, especially if it's going to stay the same for a while, or obviously get worse as it gets. We don't have any hindsight in the future, or I should say foresight into the future, to know that by the end of the year, if it's going to be any different, right?
So we will set rates again in July, just like ever source will. And I think that we have a lot that's going on in the country, and even in our own House Senate. So if that bill, House Bill 760 passes, and the utilities aren't allowed to apply under collection to delivery fees, based on the temperatures and the way the market has been looking over the winter, I don't know what they're going to do about their rates. So it's, I think, a toss-up at this point to make a prediction on if we're going to continue to be above the utility rate or not.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brown, I appreciate the presentation tonight and letting us know what the current situation is for the foreseeable future. In light of the remarks or the statement that you read, how does, how does that affect day-to-day operations of Nashua Community Power? Does that affect with the CEO stepping away? Does that affect negotiation? What, how does that affect it?
So we expect that operations will be seamless. There is a staff of eight employees at CPCNH, as well as a very strong contractor staff that's going to help with purchasing electricity, as well as maintaining our customer service, member operations. I do not perceive that there will be any issues or any gaps in service. I sit on the CPCNH's Board Executive Committee, Risk Management Committee, Audit Committee, and a lot of other committees, and am very much involved in what's happening. So I can say pretty confidently that I don't perceive any issues with the CEO's departure, but we will be looking for a replacement as soon as possible.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. It's informative. I am by no means an energy expert at all. So I guess I'm trying to figure out in my head where, what went wrong where our rates are now higher than ever source? Because when we were going over all of this at the way beginning, it was, oh, well, we can all pool, we'll be able to get a cheaper rate than ever source. And to see that ever source rate exceed what we can do this early in the program is definitely concerning to me. So what, what went wrong?
Yeah. I'm so glad you asked that question. So apart, there's two parts to this problem. One of it is a kind of a bad hedge or a bad just strategy made by CPCNH. There was an assumption that the winter months wouldn't be as bad as they were. So we left a portion of our portfolio open to wholesale market exposure, which caused us to have a higher cost to serve than the electricity rates that we set. And then that ate into reserves, which are there for this reason, so that there isn't an extreme fluctuation in price. You can see that we went from 8.6 cents to 9.7 cents, which in the grand scheme of things and the New Hampshire experience, isn't that big of a jump. Ever source has gone from 12 cents to 22 cents in the past, which is a much more significant jump, and that's because they aren't advantaged with reserves like we are at CPCNH. Now, if you couple that with the utility's ability to now take advantage of the wholesale market, which is something they weren't able to do when we started the Community Power Coalition, and that they won't be assuming as much risk as we are with our reserves by being able to apply under collection across the entire base that they have through delivery fees, that makes it easier for them to set lower rates and undercut the community power rates, if that's allowed to happen. And there is an assumption in the PUC that that will be allowed to happen if legislation isn't put through to stop it.
Got you on a quick one. So it seems kind of the, the long-term future is very hinging on House Bill 760?
I wouldn't, I think that, I wouldn't say that the long-term future of the program is hinged on 760. It's going to be harder to beat the utility rates, but we do have different strategies that we can use to hedge a little bit better and accumulate more reserves, which is a strategy we're doing right now. We could have matched the utility rate and not accumulated reserves and been put in a harder financial position just to match. But the strategy is to be above, to accumulate the reserves that we need, so we can continue to compete with the utilities. So sometimes it's important to lose a battle, so you can win the war. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I wanted you to remind us sort of back to why we started this program, and if I'm someone sitting there saying, oh, $5, what's the argument for staying? What are the things that Nashua Community Power is bringing to the community?
So if you look at the revenue report that I shared, I think it's just in the numbers. We've saved customers $6.5 million since launch in 2023. We have supplied savings. We took the electric rate down. When we launched, it was 22 cents a kilowatt hour. Now, we're over here battling between 8.9 cents and 9.7 cents a kilowatt hour, which are rates that we would have been dreaming of back in 2022. We have a community benefit of $12 million, which includes the reserves that we've been able to accumulate. I think that it's still a strong program. It's just a bump in the road and a learning experience with how we're going to operate and hedge the markets as an organization with the Community Power Coalition. Young organizations often have to learn and reapply different strategies. There's also a multitude of collective action or reactions, corrective actions that are happening in the Coalition through the Risk Management Committee to change how we purchase electricity, and I'm really looking forward to seeing those implemented.
Great. Thank you. Alderman TiVo.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, I mean, I was a huge, I'm a huge supporter of this, Nashua Community Power, and, you know, I just, the good it's done for the time we've had it is great. People aren't going to look back at that. And, you know, I don't want to diminish $5, $10, because, you know, not everybody has, you know, has the same means that some of us have. And so I think it's important to recognize that that could be very important to someone. They're not going to look back and say, hey, they saved me money last year. What are they going to do for me right now? Everybody's always about, what are they going to do for me now? So I think that's something that, you know, we have to recognize as a community. And my question was, did Manchester, they were thinking about it, did they ever jump on with this? Because they would be a huge community to jump into the pool with us. Did they ever?
No. Manchester has not launched a community power program, but we are in the Coalition with Concord and Portsmouth and the city of Lebanon, so we're not alone as a large community.
Great. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So the, so I have a couple of questions, if I could. So if somebody... So if somebody, you know, follows Alderman Thibault's suggestion and goes back to Eversource, can they come, can they come back and they, you know, as, if, if Community Power rates go down, can they come back to Community Power?
Absolutely.
So they can, they can shop on a, you know, as the rates get set for whatever period of time, they can make decisions then, right?
Yep. Since we are both default suppliers, you can hop back and forth between as much as you like without any consequences from month to month. You can't do it from like week to week or day to day or anything like that. But you can enroll in Nashua Community Power one month, call Eversource and say, hey, I want to enroll the next month, then enroll the next month. Yep.
And another question?
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed that Community Power, you know, offers besides the Granite Basic Rate, there's Granite Plus, Clean 50, and Clean 100.
Yes.
Can you explain those and, you know, you know, what, you know, what would be the advantage of someone choosing one of those programs?
So those are opt-ups to a percentage of clean renewable energy. So you can opt up to, I think it's 33%, 50%, and 100% renewable energy and pay a little bit extra. What that's giving you is a, an interesting piece of energy portfolio. So you're getting the kilowatt-hours as well as extra renewable energy credits that you can apply to your, your usage of electricity to say that you either have 33% of your electricity coming from renewable sources, 50% or 100% renewable energy. And that is a real accounting. It's great for people who might not be able to access solar, whether it's being able to afford a solar array at this time on their home or if they're in an apartment or something. They can still get that renewable energy without having to make that investment.
Okay. And, and the other?
Yes.
And so the, with the Eversource rate, does Eversource offer, you know, any kind of renewable portion of their supply that you can opt into?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And if I could?
Yes.
One last one, I think. I don't know if this is available in New Hampshire, but we have a friend who lives in Massachusetts who, you know, got into some program where she's able to buy electricity through some solar farm.
Mm-hmm.
And she gets her electricity from that solar farm, plus she gets some kind of credits in addition to that. So if she's to be believed, you know, she's paying like nothing for her electricity. Is that something that's available to us in New Hampshire?
So that, this requires a more nuanced answer. You can join a solar farm group in New Hampshire. And what you're essentially doing is joining a group that that solar farm had to form so that they could put electricity into the grid. So they need to have a group of users that that electricity is going to. So you can't just put electricity into the grid without accounting for the kilowatt-hours you're supplying. But that doesn't include renewable energy credits. That's a separate market from the kilowatt-hours. So you're helping out that solar garden by joining that solar garden group so that they could put electricity into the grid, which they're legally required to form that group. And they're giving you a little bit, I guess, I don't want to use the word kickback, but they're giving you like a credit for joining that group for the kilowatt-hours that you use that they can account for their program to be able to supply that electricity into the grid. Did I, did that explain that well?
Yeah, I think so. So the answer is yes, that is available in New Hampshire?
Yes. Yep, and we do it in Nashua. In order for us to account for the kilowatt-hours we generate from the hydroelectric facilities, we actually use our portfolio for the city, the schools and the city buildings to offset those kilowatt-hours we're putting into the grid so we can sell those, that electricity and the renewable energy credits.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Thibault.
Thank you, sorry. So I just wanted to answer that question that Alderman Jettie asked. Eversource does not have renewable rates, so you, Ms. Brown was right on that. And I also just want to say in all transparency, yes, I do work for Eversource, but we don't make any money on the supply. That's a pass-through. So it doesn't matter what supplier you have, whether you have direct energy, whether you have us. So it's not, I'm not pushing for Eversource here. And I didn't suggest it, I just asked that question if, if people should go back on, on to Eversource or not. They can go to a different supplier as well that might be even cheaper. The problem with that is there might be fees, there might be, you know, contracts. So that's a little, it's a little shadier than the, like you said, the Eversource to Nashua Community Power.
You would be hard-pressed to find a third-party supplier that's below that 8.9 cent rate for the period, including these winter months. It would be, I think, an irresponsible practice for a third-party supplier, especially with that risk in the wholesale market. So I'm interested to see how Eversource does their accounting. Maybe we should talk. Yeah.
Thanks.
Well said, everyone. Thank you so much. Doria. Oh, yes, certainly. Attorney Volpin.
Yeah. Doria, am I correct that during most of the time that Nashua Community Power has been actively functioning, that we've had rates less than public service?
Yes. Every single rate period we've been functioning, we've been under the Eversource rate or matching. And this is the first rate period that we will be over, which was definitely bound to happen at one point or another.
Right. So over the past approximately three years, a customer, a homeowner, might have been saving, saving by being with Nashua Community Power?
Absolutely.
More than $5 or $10 a month?
Yes, equating to about $6.5 million in savings since the launch of the programming. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. We really appreciate it. Keep up the good work, the hard battles. Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of January 28th, February 3rd, and February 11th, 2025 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons?
None.
Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two people signed up. You have a three-minute time period and give your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. The first is Stephen Skare.
Good evening. I'm speaking to 025-045, extending the time period for public comment. I'll be brief. I'm all for time, having time limits on public comment. It certainly helps sharpen people, and we need to respect other people's time. And whatever else my feelings, you'll notice that I finish well under the three minutes allotted. Some things take longer. A few months back, there was a gentleman who worked really hard in figuring out something useful to everyone, which was sidewalk repairs versus expenses. And he didn't have enough time for that. And for certain things, I think we should extend time, even have ways to reserve more time in advance if it takes that long to, to say something. Attendant to this is, I used to be a newspaper reporter covering a lot of towns, and I still go to a few other town meetings. As far as communication goes, this is the most unfriendly setting. I mean that, and it's not as a criticism to anyone here. It's just that the way that we're separated from what's going on up here, the benches are a little hard. Other communities, they give time to listen to people, more time for public comment, and even go so far as saying, this is half an hour we're going to have at the start of the meeting for you just to share what's on your mind. I'd much rather see us going in that direction than extending the public time a little bit is a good movement in that direction. Thank you.
Next, we have Beth Skare.
Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. Yeah, I'm here to speak in favor of extending public comment. We, it's really a valuable thing to hear from the residents of Nashua about what's going on in the city, what the government could do better, what, where things are failing. And we hear from people from all different parts of the political spectrum, and it's all valuable information. And I hope you all support this. Thanks.
And that's it for public comment. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchus regarding Tax Increment Finance Development Program, Riverwalk Entranceway signage at Bicentennial Park.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I motion to accept, place on file, and award a contract for the construction administration and construction documents related to the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project with Park McDowell in the amount of $17,300. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund, Riverfront TIF Fund slash 70500. Project contingency by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Sennett.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibault.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
12 yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
Cultural Connections Committee, Ireda Munoz, new appointment, term to expire July 31st, 2027, 10 Radcliffe Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062.
Seeing no objection, I will accept the appointment by the mayor as read and refer to the Personal Administrative Affairs Committee.
Pennechuck Corporation, Laurie Wilshire, 39 Pine Hill Avenue, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064.
Unless there's any objection, I have appointed myself as the, to the Pennechuck Corporation Board of Directors.
Does that mean you're not going to be interviewed?
This is a whole different process, Alderman Jettie. It's, it's precedent-setting, I guess, if you could say. So you're, the answer is yes, I'm not.
Swearing in is not necessary.
Yeah. Swearing at, maybe, but swearing in, no. Reports of committees. I'm sorry, Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. No objection, but you had said it was precedent-setting. Are you able to explain briefly why the change and why you're nominating yourself to go on the, on the board, why this is different?
Why the change? The change is because this is not, it's not a city committee. It's not a city, well, maybe you can hazard.
You may recall, and we had a number of meetings about this, that the corporate structure of Pennechuck Corporation was somewhat changed. They merged the three utilities, Pennechuck Water Works, Pittsfield Aqueduct Company, and Pennechuck East Utility into one. We had to acquiesce to that change. Ultimately, we did. In some of the discussions, I got the idea that it was felt that this was operating as it was designed, completely independent from the city, but so independent that you folks on the Board of Aldermen and the mayor in his position often were surprised when things were happening. The merger being a prime example, they were well in the planning stages of that before any of us found that out. In the course of discussions, some of which I was joined by Alderwoman Cle and Board President Wilshere, also the mayor, and others, I pressed for changes, additional changes to their corporation bylaws, which would allow for some, excuse me, some representation on their Board of Directors for people who were appointed for that purpose from city officials. And it was finally agreed that the mayor would have one ability to appoint someone and the board president would have the ability to appoint someone. So this is something different than ever before. This is not the president making appointments to committees, making appointments to other city commissions or boards, Conservation Commission or Historic District, District Commission or those type things. So I believe, Alderman, President Wilshere probably felt that she was in the best position to undertake this at its outset, since her tenure on this board goes back to when the city became the sole shareholder of Pennechuck Corporation. And she has the background, the experience of how that came about. In the future, obviously, there will be others, but it's my impression that the board president felt that, at least to begin with, she would be best able to function in that way.
Thank you. I appreciate it because now, I mean, that discussion went back to September, I think, when, when all of that happened. So I appreciate the refresher on that situation and now I'm remembering those conversations and, and the setup that we had. So thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. As the Chair of the Pennechuck Special Water Committee, I am wholeheartedly in favor of Madam President being the member of the Pennechuck Board and for exactly what our attorney has stated. The one person who has the, one of the strongest knowledge of this entire process of when it happened from the, from the onset is Madam President. She was the one who's been here, and I think her knowledge is the, be best suited for someone on the board. Some might have thought the Chair, but I truly believe that the President of our board is the best person suited for it. She's got the background and the knowledge. So I think from the, from onset, this is the right person. So thank you for making the best choice.
Thank you. Alderwoman Kelly.
Oh, thank you. I, obviously, makes a lot of sense for you to be the, the person appointed here. I just wanted to understand, are you a liaison from here or are you a voting member of the board?
No, I'm a voting member of the board.
Voting member of the board. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Gueye.
Thank you, Madam President. So if I recall correctly, the mayor appoints a Board of Director as well.
Yes.
So you are the Aldermatic representative?
I am, yes.
So we'll still see an appointment from the mayor's office at some time in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Who was I? All right. Lost my spot here. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the January 27th, 2025 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the January 29th, 2025 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Business unfinished at previous meeting? I think we're going to keep R-25-121 on the table. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I'd like to move to remove from the table R-25-125 by roll call.
Motion is to remove R-25-125 by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Sennett.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibault.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
12 yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Third reading of R-25-125, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2025. amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five Relative to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to re-refer R twenty five one twenty five to the Human Affairs Committee and hold a public hearing by roll call.
Motion is to re-refer. I have a question. Has HUD, have we heard anything from HUD about our allocation? And that's not what this is about?
Um, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I talked with Director Sullivan, and this is an amendment to it, which requires a public hearing, which we didn't have originally. That's why we're sending it back to committee to hold a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. He told me that too, and it went out of my mind.
That is why. Motion is to re-refer to Human Affairs by roll call, and to hold a public hearing by roll call. Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve ye zero nays.
And that motion carries. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R dash twenty five dash one three zero, relative to the acceptance of sixty one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars from the state of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Exotic Species Program and to authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Move for final passage of R dash twenty five dash one thirty by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve ye zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty five one thirty is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O dash twenty four dash zero four one amended, increasing the elderly tax exemption amounts in the maximum allowed individual and combined net income in asset amounts.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend O twenty five zero forty one by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of proposed amendments made at the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee by roll call. I'd like to briefly speak to it if I can.
Alderman Senate.
The bulk of this amendment is in the Section two ninety five dash four, Part two. Originally, this came forward with an equivalent amount for, for net income between single and married households. The change is to the net income for married households. We brought that up from fifty seven thousand to sixty seven thousand. There was an appetite for this at the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, and the number was selected with guidance from the consultant brought in by Director Cummings with the expectation that a tempered conservative lift from single to married would allow us to better rise to meet any fiscal challenges presented by this.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Motion is to amend. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve ye zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty four zero forty one as amended by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. When I first looked at this, and then I know that it was brought up in committee, I think it was in January, then it was taken up again in February, and my biggest concern was we didn't, we, meaning this board, didn't know what the impact would be on the, on other taxpayers, you know, should this, should this change. And I re-watched the committee meeting from thirteen February, and great discussion. And the committee took the advice from, I believe it was Mr. Gagny was the consultant, and he recommended pretty much what we have here to kind of get an idea of how many people will then qualify for it. He felt it would be, I don't know if he were, used the word negligible or modest, but either way, it appealed to my conservative roots when it comes to finances. And I, and I said, okay, that, that sounds like a good idea. So I'm going to hop on this.
Okay. Further discussion. Alderman Kelly.
Previous speakers said a lot of what I wanted to say around this meeting, but there was a lot of work done on this and the following piece of legislation. We did table it in order to get Mr. Gagny to our meeting. He was very thorough. He looked at a lot of different towns and compared Nashua in there. And I was, I was surprised and pleasantly to see that Nashua is, you know, one of the towns that really does invest in elderly and disabled, which is the next one. So he did the thorough work. We asked really good questions, and we came to a middle of the road to see how it happens this first year. And we talked about just, you know, keeping an eye on it. But I think it was a good, good discussion.
Alderman Tevo.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I was, I think I was the one that asked for the fiscal note on these. And so I would have liked to see at least a modest guess, so we had, we could see if we, you know, next year if we came within that modest guess. And I understand that it is very tough to figure out who's going to take it and who qualifies and all that. I get it. It's not that easy to figure out. So because, because of that, I am going to support it because I think it's important that we do this sooner than later. I wish we could have got to it earlier in the year, but I'm glad that we're doing it now. I'm going to support it as is.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to make it very clear, I am supporting this. I also want to make it very clear that Nashua is extraordinarily generous in all of our credits and our exemptions. And I say this every single time we bring this. I sound like a broken record. But I hear time and time again, people comparing us to other communities. So it needs to be said, Nashua is extraordinarily generous, and that means that we do this on the backs of others. So it needs to be said by that. I also do want to make the comment that Mr. Gagny did also comment that perhaps we should keep the single rate at the current single rate that it is now and not raise it up to the fifty seven thousand. I'm glad that my colleagues decided not to do that. I'm glad that they chose to raise it up. But that was one of his recommendations, was to, to bring on the married, but to keep the single as it is at the moment. And they chose not to, which I do appreciate them not doing it because I do think we should bring in an inflation factor. But his comment was, that is. And when looking at all of the other states, and you can go to the DRA and compare us to every other municipality, that's towns and cities, you will see that Nashua is right up there in comparison to especially like communities. You know, maybe we're not necessarily as good as Hollis, but we also don't have the money that Hollis has. So, thank you. Madam President.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, me.
Oh, Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm obviously going to support this legislation, and I echo my colleague's comments from Ward Three. We are a very generous city, and I'm sure she would agree with me, as everyone around the horshoe, I hope, would, that Nashua is New Hampshire's greatest city when it comes to trying to take care of its people. You also do, though, have to recognize that former Alderwoman Paula Johnson did advocate for this. She met with myself and Director Cummings and the Assessing Department. She was a very strong advocate to add in the two income rate for married couples. And I just wanted to honor that and appreciate the time and effort that she did to advocate for her fellow senior citizens who are working class and will benefit from this. Not as high as I would want it to be, or her, but we do have to appreciate that she brought this forward.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd? No. Okay. Motion is for final passage as amended by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve ye zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance twenty four forty one is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of O dash twenty four dash zero four four amended, increasing the blind tax exemption and the disabled tax exemption in qualifications.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to amend O twenty four dash zero forty four by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of the proposed amendments made at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee by roll call. If I could speak to that, Madam President.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you. This same language as the previous legislation that we just passed. I do feel that, just like the previous legislation, this legislation is even more important because it will impact disabled and blind residents who will also be faced with severe Medicaid cuts that are coming down from the federal government and the state government in regards to their health care. As you know, or many of, if not all, disabled people have some kind of Medicaid benefit, and they will be drastically impacted by the proposed cuts by our governor and our federal representatives. Not ours, but, you know, the majority, I guess. So this is more important than ever, that we support these folks as they are burdened further by our mismanagement of Medicaid funds that's coming down the walkway.
The motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve ye zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion for final passage of O twenty four dash zero forty four.
As amended?
As amended, yes, thank you.
Okay. Motion is for final passage of Ordinance twenty four forty four as amended by roll call. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve ye zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance twenty four forty four is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of O dash twenty five dash zero four five amended, increasing public comment time limits.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend O twenty five O forty four by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of proposed amendments made at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion? Alderman, Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I will not be supporting this, as I believe that the three minutes is sufficient, as well as the same people that come up here saying the same thing all the time. And I think it would turn into more of a ripening session than just a public comment for three minutes. So I will not be supporting this at all.
And the motion is to amend. Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in opposition of the amendment in front of us right now. When I sent on as a cosponsor, I thought the six-minute limit was sufficient. Where I would have liked to have seen this number was at six minutes, and I still feel that way.
Alderman Tevo.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I will support the amendment, although, you know, we'll talk about the next piece after. But I'll support the amendment because it's better than the original bill, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, who was on line? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I too am going to support the amendment, because if it passes, it's better than the original. I will not support the change. I feel that three minutes has been sufficient for an extremely long time. The people are asking to have it extended, supply us with numerous emails, sometimes daily, sometimes multiple pages. So we do get the information from the public on a regular basis and in detail. And I think three minutes is more than sufficient to get your point across as to whether you're opposed or for a particular piece of legislation or subject involving cities. So again, I will support the amendment, but I will not support the final bill.
Alderman Klee.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I, I'm on the fence as to whether or not to support the amendment or even when we get to the final bill. And, and the, the comment that I want to make is, the, in part, I believe that the three minutes are sufficient. And, and I will argue that there are many communities that don't have as much public comment as, as we do. We have public comment at the beginning, and we have public comment at the end, giving three minutes on each one. And the, the end being kind of a, an open comment that has nothing to do with, with the meeting, because we believe that the citizens should be able to speak on whatever that they want to bring forward. The, I've spoken to a number of communities who, one community in general, that, that has only, their, their two meetings a month, they only do one public comment, period. And it's only about what's, what's at the meetings. They don't have any at the end of the meetings. I've spoken to communities that have no open comment. It's only whether they have it at the beginning or the end, what was part of the meeting. So having talked to that and so on, and I do have some of my constituents that I speak to, and I, and I do talk to them, and I say to them, what you have to say, you need to get it out as concise as possible if you're going to sit there and berate people and so on. I did speak at the last meeting, and I, and I did say things like, sometimes when they're saying their name and so on, that eats into the three minutes or the four minutes, you know, maybe we should take that out. But I think if we, when the person comes up, we say to them, you know, please give your name and your, your name and adre, name and address, and you have three minutes to speak, and we don't interrupt them with the thirty seconds and so on. I think three minutes, and now that we have this very large clock, they can't help but know when the time is up. I know we're all going to be seeing three minutes in our, in our sleep. It's going to be burnt into our retinas. But, so I, I think that the three minutes will probably be sufficient, but I'm going to listen to the rest of my colleagues before even voting on the amendments.
I'm sorry. Motion is to amend. Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I also signed on to this as a cosponsor, even under the original language, for the six minutes. I am going to support the amendment. I, I think it's a reasonable compromise. It still gives the public a little bit more time. And I'm going to support the final bill once it comes forward, regardless of what the time limit is, as long as it does have a lift from that original three minutes. I'm doing so out of the interest of not only myself, but anybody that I know like myself, who even now I can feel the quiver at the back of my throat. And I, I've been doing this a year and a change now. But there are folks that come to us, and yes, sometimes we do see the same people over and over again. But there are people who do come to us when they have something to say, and they may not be the most time-tested public speakers. This is a unusual setting for somebody who doesn't come into it. I've stood at that lectern before, and it can be intimidating. And if an additional- And if an additional sixty seconds is going to help somebody get their point across, I'm willing to sit and listen to that, and so I'm going to support both the amendment and the final ordinance. Thank you.
Further discussion? Motion is to amend. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Ten yays, two nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty-five oh forty-four as amended by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'm not supporting this. I don't see the need to expand on this based on, you know, some other communities, what we get. We say we're generous with money. I think we're generous with time, too. You know, I do feel bad for the person coming for the first time, but it's hard to legislate for that one person or that two people, you know, the two people that come once for the first time and then we never see them again. I can imagine what kind of podium we would have had for the people that were coming for the national or international issues if they had six minutes or four minutes for each time they talked, or at least for the second time. It would have been painful. So, you know, if someone came with an amendment for four minutes for the first and three minutes for the second, because a lot of time that first one is people coming for the issue that is relevant to what's on the agenda, which is sometimes a first time someone's coming here, I might be able to go with that, but I just don't, I don't see us needing to expand on that. I do think, you know, Alderman Cle's point to the, just don't start the timer until they've said their name and address. That's all. Whoever is the clerk, just, I don't think we have to legislate that or put it in the record. I think we can just do that as a courtesy, I guess. But there's no way I'm supporting it at three, at four and four. Thank you.
All right, I have a list now. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, as I mentioned before, we passed this original legislation a long time ago when people used to get up and spend forty-five minutes at the microphone talking about subjects. And while the time limit on the current legislation before us isn't bad if we have two or three speakers, we've had times where people have come in, especially groups from out of town, that there are fifteen to twenty speakers, and it unnecessarily elongates our meetings. And I also feel that there are multiple ways that people can communicate more detailed information to us. They do it all the time by email, letters. So it's not that we're restricting public comment. They have other ways to do it. And I think three minutes is more than adequate to get your opinion across to us as to whether you support or don't support a particular piece of legislation. So I will not be supporting this.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, over the course of this recent term, I've gotten to know my colleague from Ward Six, and I think he has a lot of good points about free speech that I may have not have really dived into. And I think, you know, giving people, even those who are provocative, an opportunity to express themselves a little bit longer is okay. And I say that having been a person who has been ridiculed quite heavily at the Board of Aldermen. So I think I will support this. I think it's okay to give a few extra seconds, basically. And I look forward to, you know, being featured in YouTube and other videos to help people amplify their social media platforms.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't expecting to have to follow that. You know, like I said during the amendment phase, I am certainly going to support this. And with respect to my colleague from Ward Eight, who maybe doesn't want to pass legislation in favor of the one-off folks that, you know, come through here and may not be adept public speakers, I'm also hesitant to hold back changes to our legislation because of a handful of a few. You know, at the risk of alienating even more of my colleagues, yes, an additional minute per speaker elongates each speaker, and multiple speakers could elongate that time. But I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that's what we signed up for. You know, if we didn't want to be here listening, I don't know how many of us would have necessarily run. I think we do have good listeners in the room. I can say that heartily about all my colleagues. And it's what we're here to do. And there's been an ask for this for some time now, even before I was elected. Again, it's not six. When the original legislation that was referred to earlier was put forward, it was originally put forward with five and whittled down to three. So, again, in the spirit of compromise, I don't think that four is that unreasonable of an ask. So I am going to support this. Thank you.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. It's not that I don't want to hear from my constituents. They want to come. The reason why they don't come, because the same people keep coming and spending time after time, elongating their conversation. They don't have all night to sit here like some of our constituents do. So they come in, if they want to come in a group, they will have to wait hours or two. They have children, they have families, they have homes. If you have an issue, you can always email us, and we can put that in our minutes if we want to. We do not have to sit here and listen to somebody six minutes and not allow other people to leave. And that have happened many, many times where people had gotten up and left because they would never get to them. If we have a meeting where there's twenty or thirty people that want to say something, and several people are getting up there six or seven minutes, that make other people leave. And I don't think that's fair either. I think we should all have the opportunity to speak what we need to speak in the three minutes that we have. And if you need to say more, like they do in Concord, you send us a letter, you put it in the mail or email, and you can add that to the minutes. You do not have to sit there and say how, you know, smart you are, how intelligent you are, and just go on and on and repeat, and it slams. You don't have to do that. I signed up, yes, to pass legislation for the good of the city. And sometimes this is not the good of the city, sitting here listening to people criticize and talk about our elected officials or our employees or anybody else. I can't, I can't in good conscience vote to let somebody just verbally abuse. I didn't sign up for being verbally abused. It just wasn't, I didn't sign up to do that. I might have signed up to listen, but not being abused. And that happens all the time in this chamber. And it's not by the majority. It's by the minority. Because the majority won't come because they know they will have to sit here for hours. I have constituents, too, and I'm around the city all the time, so I hear what they say. I can't sit there and wait three hours. I can't sit there and wait two hours. I have family. I have things to do. So I can. I have family. I have things to do. But I signed up to sit here, but not listen to someone say the same thing over and over and over again. And they can just send us an email saying their opposition or whatever they want to say. But not, I don't think it's fair for somebody to sit there hours just to be heard or leave because it didn't get to them. So go ahead and increase that and see what happens. I will not support this.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So I too will, I am not in favor of this change. I think three minutes at the beginning and three minutes at the end is more than sufficient. I agree with what Alderman Dowd said, and I would like to add that, you know, the, you know, people don't, do not have a constitutional right to come to our meetings and speak. They have a constitutional right to express their opinion, and we can't do anything to prevent them from doing that. But we don't have to allow them at all at this meeting. They have, you know, they can write to us, you know, they can publish stuff in the newspaper. We have a public access channel that is begging for people to come and speak. And, you know, the public access channel will, you know, is constantly trying to recruit people to come. And, you know, they'll show you how to have, you know, to say whatever you want to say, you know, on television. And they'll produce it for you, and they'll put it on the television, and they'll, there's no time limit, and they repeat it, you know, several times during the day. You know, so there are many ways people can express their opinions in this city. And, you know, the fact that we allow three minutes at the beginning and three minutes at the end is more than sufficient. You know, some cities, you know, Portsmouth, for example, allows only one three-minute period. Manchester, they allow three minutes. Once, they have two meetings a month, but you can only speak at one meeting. And, you know, there are some cities and towns that don't allow, you know, any, any public comment. So I will not vote for this.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I will support it. And even though I did sign on as a sponsor for six minutes, I was happy with the amendment that it was four because it's more, four is more than three. College-educated, I figured that out on my own. And, but just, you know, some of the comments here, I think that in our previous debate, if you will, about the elderly tax exemption, we talked about how Nashua is a unique city, and we are a unique city. And I think that to compare us to other cities when it comes to, well, this one has this amount of public comment, this one doesn't, we were just doing it for tax exemptions. So it's okay for tax exemptions, not okay for more open speech. I think that in any way possible, if we can allow folks to come out and tell their story. And to that, I would say that, yes, the emails that we get, for sure. I read them all. I respond to some, not all, but I do read them. I think that when someone comes here and tells their story outside of, you know, you can't, you can't pick up on tone, you can't pick up on anything that comes through in an email. If someone's passionate about a specific topic, then they need to come here and tell their story. And they need to understand that the aldermen here are sitting right in front of them, and they're hearing what it is they have to say and the tone in which they say it. Now, I don't always agree on the tone that we hear inside the horseshoe. My experience is you get more with honey than you do with vinegar, but to each their own. I think that it's important that we hear from them, and if it extends it by a minute, I'm fine with that. I think that everybody in the horseshoe would probably pick on me because I don't like long meetings. I'd be happy to talk to anybody about how to shorten them. But, you know, I think adding one minute per public comment, period, shows that we want to hear from them. We want to hear their passion. We want to hear what it is they have to say. And they should know that we're hearing it. And I'll leave my comments there. Thanks.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with my colleague that we are unique and so on. And if anybody was listening, the comments that I made about the elderly and the other tax credits is that Nashua is more than generous. I'm not saying that I necessarily agree with Nashua being so generous. Because when we are that generous, we are putting that burden on other people. So I'll leave that comment. Everybody's heard me ad nauseam at that. The bit about the public comment and so on, in truth, I actually like hearing what the public has to say. And I tell my constituents this at times. I come very prepared to every meeting. So I know how I want to vote, but there are times I've changed because I've heard my colleagues say something that I hadn't thought of. We can't have a discussion outside of this because that would violate right to know. So I hear something. And then sometimes I hear something that the public said that's like, oh, it gives me an aha moment. So I do appreciate that. No one likes to be yelled at. The truth is that when I hear other communities who say that, no, they don't. I mean, one community actually has a public comment that the public speaks to no alderman. They actually open up public comment before the aldermen get there so that they can talk to the cameras. We don't do that. We sit here and we listen to the public comment. I think that's respectful. So we don't do necessarily what others do. I think three minutes is sufficient. I truly do believe that what we've done is adequate. We brought it to three minutes because what was happening is much what Alderwoman Timmons had said was, I can tell you for a fact that I had constituents who sat here night after night, meeting after meeting, and to this day no longer come to meetings because others had talked so long that they never got a chance to speak. They just left. For whatever their personal reasons were, they were here too long and they just left. And that's when the benches were more comfortable. So they just didn't stay here. We've shortened it. I don't think public comment is as long as it used to be, but it's left a bad taste in their mouth and so on. I think three minutes is adequate. Yes, there are times when people get cut off, but I think most of the time is that way. I think the three minutes are adequate. I think we should stick with it. Truthfully, I'm not really even sure that we need the second public comment, but that's a discussion for another day. I will leave it at that. That will end up all over social media tomorrow, but I've said it, and that's exactly how I do feel. If I had my brothers, we would not have four minutes definitely on the latter part of it, but I will not be supporting four minutes.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I think this has been a good discussion. I definitely have heard the discussion in the committee, and, you know, I went through when we first put this together. I think that the original legislation had some things that I wasn't comfortable with, like, can you say rude things? You can say anything about me. That's within the decorum of this. That's fine. But I think the three minutes is sufficient, and there was a point made in our committee that I thought was really striking. And the point was that, A, we don't have to have it. It's just up to us what we need to want to do in this setting. And our job is to get the work done. And sometimes when public comment has gone very long, our meetings go very late. Actually, the first time I walked into this chamber was when we were doing public comment on the Art Center. And I stayed until about one in the morning so that I could speak. But I think that there are instances where that's the case. I don't think we're saying we don't want to hear from everybody. We're not saying we're going to limit the whole piece to only twenty minutes or something, where I think the three minutes has been very sufficient. It's allowed us to hear from people if they want to passionately come in and talk about it. It's rare that I see someone really feeling like, you know, after that three minutes, they haven't gotten their point out. So I will not be supporting this.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. So I absolutely will rise in support of this final product. Obviously, it was for the six minutes, but understand the state of compromise. I'll take four instead of three. Take that any day. I guess when I look at public comment as a whole, and I mean, when I first got in the politics, and I followed a lot of what was happening up in Concord, and as a few of our colleagues around the horseshoe have served time up there, we've all sat through hearings that have gone four, five, six hours where, you know, you have your first two hours, you break for lunch, come back, and you're still talking about the same subject. And I feel for a body of that size to do that, and they're making a hundred dollars a year, facing twelve-hundred pieces of legislation, if we want to give more time at a local level, I'm all for it. I truly do feel the more people come, the more people talk, the better off we are as a community. as a community as a whole. And I think the discussion on this has been really good, both at the committee level and here at the full board level. It's been a really well-thought-out piece, but at the same time, I feel like the amount of time we have put into this legislation probably adds up to about the time in a year that we would have of extra public comment at the end of the day. If we were to take all the minutes we've spent debating it, amending it, and working on it, I, I feel pretty, pretty solidly that that would probably be the amount of time it would add to our meetings, which in the realm of things, I don't feel is that much. So, I mean, I'm always here to listen and I'll support anybody's right to get up and talk for whatever period of time they would like.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that I want to validate everything that my colleagues have said who are in opposition. I truly believe everything of your points to be true and accurate. I personally just also refuse to allow two, sometimes up to four, people impact those who may not be as engaged with their government and want to come to speak longer than three minutes. I don't want to allow those people to have power over my vote like that. And that's another point to why I want to support this legislation. I would also want to go back to my colleague from Ward Nine, most of which of his statements I completely agreed with as well, but I would change to the wording of your statement to you get, you know, more with honey than with vinegar, rather than vinegar. Thank you.
Welcome. Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I, I get tired of the argument, this is what we signed up for. I signed up for three minutes and three minutes, that's what I signed up for, that's what it was when I signed up. So, we sign up for a lot, you know, so, I mean, I'm more than happy to listen to people. I listen to people all the time. I had a woman call me today, I called her right back. And hopefully she got the help that I tried to help her with. You know, it's, it's, I like public comment, I want people to come here, I want people to speak about things that are concerning to them, but go back, go back and listen to the public comment we've had. The people that speak the longest and the loudest are just basically saying how much they hate the mayor, that they hate one of us. I know on that side, you guys don't get the hate, you just don't. And, you know, whether, whoever speaks, it's, it's always the mayor's terrible, Attorney Bolton's terrible, that's a lot of the speech. And again, they have six minutes to say all the stuff they want, and that's fine, I'll sit here, I listen to it. I've certainly been, you know, party to some of it. Alderman Moran, I think, is in a lawsuit over some of it. So, we all get that, and that's, you know, most of us get it, and that's okay. I want people to be able to speak. But I think, you know, the, and I don't even care about the meeting. I'm not one of those that cares, you know, once it gets past a certain time, everybody's in bed at my house, all right, who cares? Right? I don't care what time I get home, it doesn't matter. So, I'm not, Alderman Sullivan wants meetings shorter? Ah, it doesn't bother me. I'm used to long meetings all day. So, that doesn't bother me. So, personally, it's not personal to me as far as, I think the three minutes is sufficient. And when we look at other towns and cities, we do that for everything. And one of my first questions is, what do they do in other cities and towns? Because I'm curious as to where we fall on that curve, like, are we good at what we're doing, are we doing more than other communities? Are we doing less? I don't want to do less stuff. I want to be the leader. And we are better at this than other communities. We give people time to speak, so I think that's a good thing. I don't think, you know, if we're voting against this, I don't think that means we don't want public, you know, comment. We have good public comment, better than most communities, if not all. So, I think, you know, it's, it's important to look at that. And, and again, I want people to come and talk. You know, Alderman Jettie made a great point, go on public access, probably better ratings than us, right? So, feel free. But, you know, we always listen, I listen, I want people to come talk to me, whether it's on the phone, so I get that tone, whether it's here, even after the meeting, come speak to me if you have something you want to say to me, I'm, I'm fine with that. I've heard the best and I've heard the worst, and I'm good with it, but I just don't, I just don't see the need to go the extra two minutes, a minute and a minute. So, thank you.
Wow. Okay. Alderman Timmons?
I just have one additional comment. I just want the pub, public to know that I do not disagree with public comment. What I disagree with is the same ones saying the same thing all the time. And they can say it in the two, three-minute comments that we have already. And another thing that we do have, when we have public hearings, I have no problem sitting there, listening to them all day, because that's what we signed up for. So, I just want the public to know that I encourage other people in the public to come out and voice their concerns and not worry about the ones that's here already, they're screaming and yelling. I can't convince them that they're not going to be here for two or three hours. I cannot do that. And in good conscience, which I'm a kind person, everybody told me that, and so, I do not think that in my, in my own conscious will allow somebody to sit there and badger someone else. I just can't do it. We have a, by the way, we have a person waiting for a public comment today, and I'm going to shut up because we need to get through this meeting so we can hear him. So, I am very aware of who comes here and who don't come here. And I think we can encourage other people to come here if we don't have these long, drawn-out, unnecessary public comments, when they could send us an email, which they do anyway. So, I will never support this, so, just so you know.
Alderman Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to say the words again. I, I'm going to hearken back to my strange tendency to remember conversations that probably a lot of people forgot. And I remember we were sitting in here, I can't remember how long ago, and we were discussing an increase to our legal fees because of the number of lawsuits. And I believe it was my, my colleague from Ward Nine who suggested, just as a way to try to cool the temperature in the room, that maybe we don't put forth that additional funding. And, and I think the words he used, Alderman Sullivan, were, something's got to give, you know, it's got to stop somehow. And I believe the argument I made to you at that time was, it's not going to, just because we didn't put that money up, it's not going to. And, and that's, that's where my mind is landing now, because we're concerned about the tone and the tenor of what people are saying. If we don't give them that additional 60 seconds, it's not going to stop what they're already doing.
No.
They're still going to do it within the three minutes. It, it's hard for me to reconcile that in my mind. They're going to do it with four, they'll do it with three. If we cut them down to a minute and a half, they'd do it with that. So, I'm okay giving them the extra minute because I, I still think there's validity in opening that door for maybe the people who aren't so comfortable. Thank you.
Alderman Clay?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I, I have been in Concord. I have been chairman of a committee. I've also spoken in front of committees and I've sat on committees. And I can tell you that oftentimes when there are large hearings, they do limit at times the public's comments. They will tell you, you have two minutes. I remember being in a, in a public hearing where there was a young man, a young man, I mean, he was 15, and his young sister that were speaking. And they were truly stuttering, trying to speak, and the chairperson gave them two, three minutes. We raised our hands and asked for that to be extended because it was very obvious that these young people could not speak, and, and the chairperson did give them that time. So, so to, to correct the record, maybe most of the time there is not a time limit, but there are time limits in, in Concord. So, to say that there are no time limits is not always true. Also, I, I want to make it very clear that I speak on the phone all the time with my constituents, those that call, and some of my constituents that have come to this very chamber and have spoken very, trying to find the proper word, passionately about certain things, I have been on the phone with her at times greater than two hours. Not in recent years, but in prior years. So, to say that that person didn't get enough time, again, would be disingenuous. I have given lots of time. And I'm, I know for a fact that others have, have spoken to various people too. So, sometimes, and I don't mean that person, and I don't mean any person in particular, so please, I hope no one takes this, that I'm, I'm speaking about anybody, but sometimes the public comes to speak to the camera. And that's why some of those towns and cities that I mentioned that say they have public comment to the camera and not to the alderman, which I, I don't think is good. I think they should be speaking to the alderman. The public is just kind of a sideshow, but, or the cameras, I should say, is a sideshow. But we all know that sometimes people just come to speak to the cameras and, and we're, we are the sideshow. So, I think the three minutes is, is sufficient. They have the three minutes at the end also to speak if they felt like they needed something else to say. And again, I, I will stop talking, sorry.
Alderman Kelly?
I'd like to call the question.
Question's been called, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Gavea?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Clay?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
Okay. So, the motion is for final passage as amended by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Timmons?
No.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Gavea?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
No.
Alderman Tebow?
No.
Alderman Clay?
No.
Alderman Dowd?
No.
Alderman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Wilshire?
No.
Five yays, seven nays.
And that motion fails. New business resolutions?
None.
New business ordinances?
First reading of O-25-051 prohibiting the sale of kratom.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Clay? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of O-25-052, adjustments to the parking ordinances.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment. We have one person signed up this evening, it's Mr. Bob Keating.
Hello, my name is Bob Keating, I live at five Colvin Woods. And first, I appreciate the timer in front, I feel like I'm in a basketball game. I'm speaking on, on behalf of the Unitarian Universalist Church, Grand State Organizing Project, and the Day Cafe of St. Patrick's Church about the warming station. So, I'm one of them that's returning, so you may ask, why, why am I returning here? I'm doing it for a number of, of reasons. The first is it remains the same as the last time I was here, two weeks, that people are not allowed to sleep lying down at the warming station. I'm doing it since we left, Matt, that a person who used the warming station in our community died and was found, you know, just off of Main Street here by one of my colleagues as she came in to, to work in, you know, in the morning. I'm coming here because since I spoke, the mayor and his comments at the end of the meeting said that the reason, as I understood it, please correct me if I, if I misunderstood it, is that it was fear that, that it would be too successful, that it would overwhelm, that more people would come there. And I sent, forwarded that email that I sent to, to the mayor saying that I think that would be a success, that's what we were attempting to do, is to get people off of the streets and people with health difficulties and to, to be able to have a decent night's sleep, I think is a good thing. If we couldn't do otherwise, then that's what we would do, you know, in terms of a warming station. I come here with the thoughts from my, my sister-in-law, Kay, and she often, with her southern drawl, would say, that's just not normal, or it's just not right. And that's the way I think about it, and I think most people here feel that way. It's not right to, if we can prevent people from being deprived from, you know, from sleeping. So, those are a number of reasons that I, you know, that I've come here. I think it's a simple fix. And I think the body here, it, it fits with this, with this city, it fits my view of, of our mayor and our health department. I think it's just the right thing, and it can be done. There's no impediments, economics, there's no impediments in terms of, of permits or anything. And the mayor could go down tonight and, and just say, it's all right to sleep there. So, I just hope that's why I've come, and I think most people hold that view, that it's just the right thing to do. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. For maxed by members of the board, Alderman Timmons?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I have something to be proud about. My grandson, Bishop One Division Two, first place at Bishop Gerton, he's 285 pounds. I think some members of this board seen how big he is, but he's really talented and I want to congratulate him.
Anyone else over here? Alderman Senate?
No, I think Alderman Moran.
Oh, Alderman Moran, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I think everyone will recall, a couple months ago, I said, what's going to happen? Someone's going to die in the streets? And it happened. I guess I, being an actual healthcare person who treats people every day, traveling across the country and sees people suffering, I am sad that my training and experience came true in the city of Nashua, from what we just heard from the member in the public. And I hope you all can sit with that, and the Department of Public Health, they could also sit with that and think for a moment to be more engaged in with the speaker from the public end, been discussing. There's much more tragedy that happens in the community than any of you wouldn't really be aware of. You know, I know, there's only one other person on the board that works in healthcare, and we see this tragedy happening so frequently for disadvantaged populations throughout the city, whether they're housed or unhoused. And it's only going to get worse. The Medicaid cuts are going to happen, the EDs are going to be overwhelmed again, and it's going to be upon the city to take action, to stand up for our citizens. And I hope hearing from a very respected person who is very engaged in helping the needy will help thrust a better program next year, or to have something done even this year. It was very sad, I was in, I was notified right away, Director Bagley also reached out to me to help provide crisis and grief counseling, free by the way. I mean, if, if these people have found that body, didn't have supports immediately in place, just like we had a D-BAR person there as well, that, you know, it's just a tragic, tragedy. Secondly, I would just like to thank everyone who did co-sponsor the kratom legislation. I did, I have been in contact with the Nashua Prevention Coalition and United Way, who will be supporting that legislation. They'll be at the Personnel Administrative Affairs, Michael Affleberg and others as well, we're also waiting to hear back from Powell, who it sounds like they would also be... I'm also waiting to hear back from Powell, who it sounds like they would also be very interested in supporting this legislation. And then, we received a very interesting heartfelt email for us by Ms. Graham, and I think everyone should really take time and read that literature and research the mother who lost her son to kratom addiction just over the border in Massachusetts, and the thousands of people who've lost their loved ones to this terrible, terrible drug. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very sorry to hear the news that was shared with us tonight by the speaker from the public. It's the, I think, what we really consider the worst-case scenario, when we look at the need for overnight shelters and warming stations is to avoid this, and it's happened. And that's unfortunate, and I don't know specifically who that was, but undoubtedly, they have somebody out there that cares for them and loves for them. So, I want to send my condolences out to their family, whomever they may be. And I just want to take a moment to reiterate some comments that I made at the Human Affairs Committee on this very subject. We recently received a very thorough update from Director Bagley on the, on the operations of the warming station. I was very glad to hear that. It was very much something of a snapshot of life in a, life in a day, or night, I guess it would be. And I chose that night to not belabor the subject of whether or not folks could sleep in that facility, because we were there to hear the update. But, I did state at the end that the greater discussion, the fact that we've seen a significant increase from last year's use of the warming station to this year's use, and the demand for it and the interest in it from the various groups who are volunteering to help keep that running, it shows the need for something greater. It shows, it really illustrates that need, that we need that low-barrier option that can one day satisfy all the needs that we need for this community. And so, I hope that conversation continues. I sort of remarked earlier tonight before we started, that if that conversation needs to start the day after the warming station closes for the season, let's get it going, because we need to make sure that we're ahead of the ball in this to avoid future tragedies like this. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for passing the amendment to the tax exemptions, raising the limits, and to the people in the public, you don't get these exemptions unless you apply for them. So, you know, please contact, if you think you're anywhere near the, being qualified for it, please contact the Assessing Department. I think the deadline is April 15th to apply, and so, you know, don't delay. Call them. Get the forms that are required. Make sure you meet the deadline so that you can, if you qualify, the city wants to make sure that you get the exemptions that we've just passed. So, thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I too want to, want to, you know, send out my condolences to the person, that person's family that that happened to. You know, it's terrible tragedy. I mean, at the end of the day, I don't know the details, so I don't know if the warming station having sleeping would have made a difference. Maybe it would have, maybe it wouldn't. So, I don't want to, I don't want to say that's the blame or not the blame, but certainly, it could certainly reduce the amount of people that are on the streets. And so, it's distressing that we haven't been able to figure that out. So, you know, to Alderman Senate's point, we need to make sure we figure this out way ahead of time for next year, because we can't go through this again. And I wish it was something we could do right now, and if there is a way to just allow people to sleep there, so we can get more people in there, that would be great. Some better news, congratulations to Bishop. The best news for me is that he's done his wrestling season. He can focus on our basketball team. So, I'm very happy about that. So, go Bishop. Congratulations, even though he goes to Bishop Gerton instead of South, where he should be going. And then, lastly, I just want some other good news that our Congresswoman Maggie Goodlander today passed through the House, a bipartisan bill for small businesses, so hopefully it'll get through the Senate and through the President. But, it's nice to see both our Congresswoman working bipartisan and going out there right away and getting some legislation passed that can help people that have small businesses, and hopefully, you know, that comes back to Nashua as well if it passes. So, congratulations to her, and I'm glad to see her doing what she said she was going to do. So, thank you.
Okay. Committee announcements. Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. The Culture Connection Committee meet tomorrow from 12:00 to 1:00, in auditorium, third floor.
Anyone else? Committee announcements? I can't see who that is.
Yes.
Oh, Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just real quickly, tomorrow's infrastructure is going to be at 7:30 rather than 7:00, because the Ward Two meeting is tomorrow, and hopefully, if I get cleared by my doctor tomorrow, I would attend both. Otherwise, I have to have somebody else step in and chair infrastructure.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Just a reminder, Personnel and Administrative Affairs is at 7:00 PM on Monday. It is the third one within six weeks, but looking forward to that.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have my calendar in front of me. I brought a different laptop. Ms. Graham, could you remind me of the date for P E D C?
Sure.
Sorry, everyone.
No, that's okay.
I have March 18th.
Correct, March 18th.
Yes, thank you to my vice chair. I appreciate that. It was not, but that's going to be a very important meeting. We're going to talk about the Elm Street development, and I encourage community members who are interested in getting very fair and good housing and developing at the Elm Street School to come down and hear the presentations that Director Cummings will be sharing with us on the two finalists for the potential contract.
Alderwoman Kelly.
For you to the Chair, P E D C, is that the meeting where public can come with questions, or are there going to be additional public forums through the two people? It was asked to me today, and I didn't know the answer.
Alderman Moran, do you have an answer?
Yes, that's a very good question from my colleague at large. So, that is just one of many meetings that will be occurring. There'll be numerous public input sessions that will be able to be had prior to the committee selecting the finalists for the development, and then, obviously, we too have to make, concur with the committee's decision on who they pick. So, there remain opportunities for the public, and Director Cummings, I believe, will be, if not has already, shared, and those will be brought for the next few weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Jettie, do you have a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay. By roll call. The motion is to adjourn. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
And we are adjourned at 9:29 PM. Thank you, everyone.